Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first agenda item tonight is public comment. This is a time for members of the public to comment on any matter of public concern that is within the jurisdiction of the school board that is not on the agenda. No member of the public may comment on contested cases, adjudicated proceedings, or personal matters, including pending grievances against staff, school staff. You will have two minutes for comment. Please state your name prior to your comments. Would anyone like to provide public comment? Okay. Next agenda item is approval of last meeting's minutes.
I move to approve meeting's last, last meeting's minutes.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, reports, Mr. Koenig.
All right, enrollment in the elementary is up by three students from our last meeting. We're sitting at 195. Looking back on the last month, we've had some illnesses moving through our building as of late. Want to credit the school nurse. Nurse Glouss has done a nice job communicating with the staff about the types of illnesses that she's seeing. And of course, we're ramping up our campaign to make sure that kids are washing their hands properly and covering coughs and sneezes, et cetera, but yes, we definitely have had some illnesses. I think that's kind of happening statewide at this point. We've finished our MAP winter results a while ago now, but I have not had the opportunity to share them. Four grades in math experienced double-digit growth, and that's across their classroom average from fall to winter. Four grades are carrying an average that, that fall into the proficient range, which is slightly above grade level. So that's good. It's not perfect. The teacher's response to that has been perfect. The classes that are not experiencing the kind of growth that we want to see have been, have been meeting. They're making, they're making a plan, intervening where it's necessary. Very proud of the staff for their, for taking that, that role on and refusing to ever regress to the mean. We want to always be just a little bit better than everybody else, and we're willing to put in the work to do that. Reading, same story there. All class averages were in tier one or above range. Again, like to see some more growth in that, but again, once again, I'll reiterate that teachers' plans that they have put into play to raise those scores is great. And we're not trying to raise them to average. We're trying to raise them to advanced. That's, that's our objective, and we're going to stick to that. Current projects that we've got going on, summative evaluations for all staff. Everyone gets a summative evaluation. Those are due April 15th. Nearly halfway complete with those. By the end of this week, I will be at the halfway point. Curriculum map and proficiency measures continue to happen. The dedicated Whitehall Elementary staff is meeting, has been meeting after-school hours to try and create this proficiency map for math. Math is nearly complete. All but complete. We've already started work on other disciplines as well. So they're putting in this time because they want to know exactly what a proficient student, or a proficient effort for a student looks like based on state standards and how they measure up to that in terms of mastery or approaching mastery, et cetera. And so a great deal of work has gone into this. If you calculate up all the hours total, we're well over 100 man-hours right now in getting this project off the ground. So again, kudos to the team. They're working hard and getting the job done. Strategic plan is still ongoing. The, it is drafted, and we're making a couple final tweaks. I got, I'm way down, just a couple more. I'm waiting for a couple board members to let me know what they think on those final plans, and we'll be able to have that complete and ready to go for the next meeting. But the rest of the team has weighed in, and we've got our curriculum plan almost completed for strategic plan. Looking ahead, we are starting to get our annual field trips scheduled. If I'm an elementary student in Whitehall right now, I'm looking at June thinking, "Man, I know we have to come to school a little bit extra, but there is going to be some fun things going on in June." Not just with the field trips, but we are working on some community outreach concepts where we have some walking field trips where we're going to incorporate some local businesses. Still in the planning phase right now, but it's going to be an opportunity for our students to be enriched while they are outside of the classroom, as well as giving back to the community and thanking this community for its incredible support. So those things are starting to come together right now, and we're excited about that. Masked window opens next week for third through fifth graders. Teachers are getting schedules together. I haven't heard yet when each classroom is going to be testing, but that will be forthcoming here in the coming days. So we are moving forward, sprinting into spring. Any questions?
Awesome. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We've been really busy at Whitehall Middle School, Whitehall High School. Recently, we hosted a middle school band festival. Big thanks to Mrs. Heilich. Couldn't be more proud of the kids. In addition, I need to give a shout out to my entire staff, especially Brianna Ostrander. That morning, we had, we didn't have some subs that showed up, and all the staff stepped up, combined some classes, and covered for everybody else. And that's really an example of the team culture we're trying to build in our school. So I really appreciate everybody stepping up, helping out. The middle school band fest, or not band, music festival did go on without a hitch. Thanks, Mr. Koenig, for covering while I was gone. Recently, I had a professional development day on Friday, March 14th. Nurse Glouss led a discussion and review of our school wellness surveys. Talked about important topics: mental health, suicide, drug use with teens. Talked about those as a staff, how we address those things, how we support our kids. Mr. Slater, I introduced the CSSP initiative. It's been rolled out this second semester with Mr. Norbeck. CSSP is something that's been alive and well in the elementary school. It stands for Citizenship Social School, Social Skills Programming, excuse me. And we're just extending that through the eighth grade. He is using the school district's Second Step curriculum to teach lessons during the enrichment periods, the Trojan times. In addition, kids that have three suspensions already are mandatorily being met with, with him, and going through some units with Second Step Two as a proactive measure to help prevent them getting suspended this quarter into the semester. Online presentation of AI tools for teachers. Brisk is something that was brought back by Mrs. Neeskins from a superintendent conference. Shared that with the staff. One of my staff said that is the best AI tool that they've used, so that went well. Some time for mentor-mentee. One of the best questions, I did some semester check-ins after the principal conference, and one of the questions is, "Who has helped you out?" And I love that question because people get to shine a light on other people, on the people that have helped them, and the count is endless, besides saying everybody. Specifically, a lot of times, our mentors are doing a good job reaching out to our young staff and new people here. Formative assessment. We have our mass back, our mass assessments back as well. Teachers were given time to look at those, review those. As we get ready, we're actually gonna have another cycle that coming up here in a couple weeks. I recently attended the Principal Advocacy Conference in Washington DC last week. Principals from all over the country came together to advocate for public schools and the education profession. It was very exciting. It was inspiring. Got to meet with each one of our congressmen. And in person, I mean, there's so much that goes on during an election, but to have FaceTime, and those guys gave us quite a bit of their time. Every one of them supports education. And it was a crazy time to be in D.C. because on the back wall, there's a TV that says, "Half the Department of Defense is getting cut tomorrow," right? So that's not something that's brand-new. I mean, if you look into and research what these guys have been doing, saying, thinking, now, what does that actually mean? Is that downsizes to our state? We were there as principals to advocate to keep money intact, to fund our public schools, and also for the teaching profession. So, though it was good, it was a good time. It was very enlightening. I could go into details, but if you're interested, reach out to me. I'd gladly share. Big things coming up, big things. 'Twas the week before prom. Went all through the schools. Every student was wondering who's going with who. They're not real sure. They'll have to wait to find out, but come Saturday at 7:00, they'll know, no doubt. So this Saturday is prom. Three different schools. We invited Willow Creek and Harrison. A lot of excitement, anticipation in the air for that. They're over there setting up as we speak. Following, the following Thursday, there'll be a middle school dance. It has its own level of anticipation, although at a lower level. Strategic planning committee has met a couple times. We have a draft submitted to the district to take a look at and make some final tweaks, but it's come together pretty well. Spring sports have begun. Practices are in full swing, so the weather, we're really hoping holds out for them for track season and golf. We have a lot of kids that are out and excited, so we're excited about that. One big public plea all the time: we need substitutes. So, spring is a busy time for students and teachers. A lot of people gone, and our substitutes are huge. So if you know somebody that would like to sub, please send them our way. We could always use a few more good subs. Put on here, we're interested in some. Please let the hard-working, kind people know we could use some subs. Love to have them in our schools.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, Mrs. Neeskins, district report.
Yes, so just an update on our calendar. Normally, we approve our school calendar as close as possible to the March school board meeting. That's just been typical for us. Just an update on that. We have been meeting, Mr. Koenig, Mr. Slater, myself, and the union. That is in the works. A couple of things have held that up. My own conference, which was the National Conference for Superintendents that I attended last week, plus our union president has had a family emergency. And so due to those conflicts of time and us not being able to reconvene, we haven't been able to meet for the, for the past week. So we will get it done hopefully by the April board meeting. That is our goal. We want to be as, get that accomplished as quickly as possible, but that's the status of it currently. Our strategic plan is also in the works. All of you have been involved in various committees for that. We are also anticipating that that strategic plan can be brought to the next board meeting. The two parts that we're working on finalizing are the K5 and 612 curriculum plans. So that, that is also something to be expected for April. A few notes about our, about our teaching staff. So I really want to recognize Mrs. Carrie Bateman, who is our, one of our sped teachers. She has taught with us for 25 years in this school district, and she is retiring at the end of this school year. So that will be a big loss for our district as far as her knowledge. And she is just an excellent human being, a great colleague. Kids have nothing but good things to say about her. The staff says the same, and her administration certainly would concur with that also. And so I've had the privilege to work with her for the past 10 years, and I can say unequivocally, we will miss her. So I just want to publicly acknowledge her service. And we are, we have advertised that position for that reason. In addition, we have other, two other teachers who are leaving our staff this year. Mr. Zach Kozicki, who has been on our staff for the past several years. He has, he wears a lot of hats, as you know. He is recently commissioned to be an officer in the Army Reserve, so he has attended training this spring for that. And then he is also the Madison County Sanitarian. And he's decided that he's going to focus on those other positions that he has and move away from teaching. So we wish him all the best. He's been great for our kids and our staff as well, so we will miss him. And then finally, Mrs. Royce is moving into the private sector from teaching. She's been with us teaching math for the past several years. And I know from my own two girls that they have greatly appreciated her knowledge and how she teaches math. It's hard to find good math teachers, and, and she's a great one. So we will also miss her, and those positions have been advertised. Some good news is that our, and I will share this now, but you will see an official name for hire on next week's, or next month's board packet, is that Mr. Slater did conduct with our teacher committee interviews for the math position and was able to hire a math teacher. He also has this week scheduled a science teacher interview, so, and a special ed teacher interview. So those are all in the works. We have applicants, and we are cautiously optimistic that we will be offering names for you to hire at the next April board meeting. Moving along to information that the 80s asked me to share with you. Currently, we have 18 kids out for high school track. We are anticipating 30 out for middle school track, though it has not quite yet commenced. And this is kind of amazing. So this is exciting because this is our newest sport. We have 25 kids out for golf, which is really great. And I always feel like golf is a sport where I like to see kids participate because it is something that a lot of people do for life. So it's exciting to see a lot of our kids choosing to join that. And finally, just want to update you that I did attend the National Conference of Education, which is why I, the board meeting could not be held the week I was gone. And I really feel like the sense kind of more generally from superintendents across the country is that we're all, we're all kind of flying a plane, and we don't know how much jet fuel is in it and where it's going to land. And what I mean by that is our funding is, is very much in question at this point. We don't know exactly how federal funding is going to look in the coming years. And so because of that, it is kind of an uncertain time, and this is something that every school in America is facing, not just us. But it, it does contribute to stress for Alyssa and I. Alyssa spent the afternoon very stressed as she was counting numbers and, and gathering some information to help our board make decisions down the road. So thank you for your hard work on that. But this is something that we're gonna be discussing throughout the coming months, is, is our funding and what that will look like for next year. We just don't know at this exact moment. That is my update. I'm ready to move on.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, old business. Reviewing the athletic expenditures, expenditures and revenue.
This will be very brief because we've already looked at this several times, but this is the final numbers from winter sports. So middle school basketball, their travel costs were $2,317 for the season. That is recouped by the activity fees that the students who participated paid. With that $100 activity fee that we charged everyone per season, now we have recouped those costs. So that is good news. Okay? Wrestling, the final cost for travel, food, lodging, busing, driving the vans, et cetera, was $16,580.85. We were able to recoup one-tenth of that, $1,600. And remember, this does not include coaching costs. This is just our travel expenses. Basketball, this is always our shining star. So with our activity fees figured in, we made roughly $3,000. We were in the plus. Cheer, with our activity fees figured in, we were also roughly $1,000 in the positive. And remember, when I say in the positive, that isn't like we're making money. We still have to pay for coaches. So this is just reviewing our travel expenses solely. So certainly in much better position than we were last year. We have now started to be able to break even with our travel expenses and then use some of that money from activity fees. We don't have overages that will help pay for our coaching costs, so we are not in the black, you know, in that respect. But this is, this has definitely moved us very much the needle in the correct direction. So that is the report on those expenses. Are there any questions on that report?
All right, Mr. Cross. Okay, I'll move on to new business. Oh, okay, we have Mr. Cross here with us tonight to give us a presentation on something about mapping the school. He will tell us more.
He's gonna, do you want this on? Do you want this on yet?
Yeah. Well, good evening. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Chad Cross, and I'm the captain and detective for the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office. We've worked with the schools before, doing some armed intruder training and whatnot, keeping pretty good contact with Mr. Slater and Hannah about that. And we're always kind of looking at ways we can kind of improve school security in our response to any kind of incidents that happen. Couple months ago, the sheriff's office was able to purchase this device behind me. This is called the Oscar 360. It is a camera system for crime scene processing. It takes 360-degree spherical photos of rooms, cars, I mean, you can just about, wherever you can put that camera, it'll get you a pretty good picture. It's included with a tube on there that has all your GPS and compassing and all that that goes with your pictures. One of the benefits of that, outside of processing and crime scenes and being able to present that to a jury, one of the big selling points on it was for us was to use this system to be able to come into a school and do 360 photos of every classroom, hallways, every, just every nook and cranny of the building. And then that's, all those photos are put together in a file that would be maintained at the sheriff's office. So if something happened, we could pull those files out. So, you know, if we had an incident where we had to bring, say, a SWAT team from a surrounding agency, the likelihood that that team has ever been in this building is pretty small. But as they were getting together and getting here, we could get those pictures down here. And now all of a sudden, that commander has 360-degree photos of every classroom, every hallway, the floor plan of the building, everything, all GPSed out, marked out, and be able to see it basically in real time. So that's what I'm asking the board tonight, is permission to come in on a Friday or another time when the students aren't around, myself, probably somebody else from the sheriff's office, and just come through the buildings and take a whole bunch of pictures. So part of my training on this, I had to kind of do some projects. I kind of did a project of the sheriff's office. No, I'll get it. So just kind of give you guys an idea of what the program looks like, and hopefully.
Is this what's on your screen, or?
Yeah, I went to sleep. I'll have to get logged back in. Just give me one second. So this is when you get into the computer side of it, this is what it would look like. You can see the GPS mapping on the side there. All those little red pins, that is where I took a photo. It'll change to a green pin. That's the photo that's currently displayed. And then we can... We can open up this full screen. This is just Google Earth. So anything you can do on Google Earth, we can do here. I can drop into Google Street View, look at that. The other nice feature with this is, I'm talking with Hannah, you know, they have a scale, floor plan drawing of all the buildings. I can actually take that and attach it to this, and I can overlay it on the building on Google Earth. So on top of those photos, we can put a floor plan right on top of the building. We can adjust its scale so it fits the building. We can adjust its orientation so it's in line with the building. So not only do we have 360-degree photos, but then we'd have the floor plan and could see where we at in the floor plan throughout the building. And then if you've been on a real estate website lately, you've probably seen virtual tours. They're getting to be pretty popular. That's basically what this does. This just creates a virtual tour. On the crime scene side of it, we have a virtual tour of a crime scene. For this purposes, we'd have a virtual tour of the entire campus available for the sheriff's office if needed in an emergency. We can go through. We can label things. You see, I got a little kind of blue security camera icon up there. That's where one of our outside cameras is, so I can label things, put icons in. And then just like any other virtual tour, we just click on chevrons, and we can move all around. Look all the way down, look all the way up. I hope you'll forgive the condition a little bit. Maintenance was doing some painting for us the day I was doing this. But you can see, I've got some other markers there, the little red flag, the little black circle. I can also with this, not only just labeling stuff, but then I can add in close-up pictures of all those items too. And that's all done with the iPad that runs with that, with that camera system. Take a big spherical picture with that camera, and then hit an icon on the little pad and walk right up to it and take a close-up picture. We can add multiple photos for each one of those, just kind of if we needed to show something important or show, hey, you know, this is where a keypad is and what it looks like. We can also include any... Any documentation. I can add documents to this, so if there was like a master list of contacts or codes for certain doors, we can include that in here and be all part of that production file. So we just move around and keep adding points of interest and... That is a great question. Yeah, it would probably, I would probably have to come back a couple times. Would probably, you know, start with like the high school first, then come back to the elementary school or vice versa. It sets up really quick. It, it's less than a minute to take the photo, so I mean, just as fast as you can take a photo and move to the next and move to the next. But in buildings this size, I'd imagine it'd be a good day adventure. Definitely get my 10,000 steps in.
Questions?
So the administration is recommending that this is approved, but needs your consent since it involves obviously photographs of our location and GPS data. The sheriff's office has assured us it will remain housed, that the data is housed on their secure, as you can see, servers, and it's not accessible to the public.
Yeah, I move to approve the mapping of the school.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All, or all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, next item is to approve Assistant High School Track Coach Kristen Slater.
Yes, so we are recommending Kristen Slater, who's present with us tonight, as our assistant track coach. She's excited to join us, and track is already underway, so this is kind of the... She's already, she's already kind of in the position and hoping that you will agree to pay her to do so. So recommending approval.
I'm going to hire Kristen Slater as assistant high school track coach.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, approve the Assistant Middle School Track Coach Jen Bebaut.
Yes, and you may know Jen. She is one of our paras in the high school building. She has, we would recommend her hire also for the position of our Assistant Middle School Track Coach. She has, we would recommend her hire also for the position of our assistant middle school track coach. This is an elementary-only motion, so recommending approval.
I move to approve. Jen Bebaut is a middle school coach.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes? Okay. Hire paraprofessional Aubrey Sally.
Go ahead, Curtis.
So, we, we had a, a paraprofessional had to leave unfortunately. And we were very, very fortunate to meet Aubrey as she was interested in being a substitute. And so, I interviewed her and found that she is excited to be here, great to, excited to work with kids. She's already been in the position a little bit, just as a kind of a substitute and learning the ropes, learning her schedule. And she's intervening with students who need just a little extra support in their studies and is off to a fantastic start. And I would recommend that you hire her.
Remotion?
I move to approve hiring of Aubrey.
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? So, motion passes? Okay. Okay. Approve advertisement of resolution of intent to impose an increase in levies. Hannah?
Yes, so you have in front of you the annual notice of a resolution of intent to impose an increase in levies, which basically says at this point, we don't anticipate any increases because we don't know what our final funding numbers would be. This, this resolution, when adopted by the school board in March, does allow us in August, once we have those final numbers, to adjust levies as needed. However, what I'm saying to you right now is we are not going to increase our expenditures. All that is in question right now is our, our revenue in regards to that. So, we're not hiring additional staff that we don't already have or anything like that. We just absolutely do not know at this point in time. There's too many unknowns from the legislature with the STARS Act, as I've mentioned before, with E-Rate being in the Supreme Court, in the US Supreme Court for adjudication sometime in July, they expect. There's just a lot of unknowns. So, at this point, we just are noticing the public that in August, we may have to adjust our permissive levies depending upon what funding is apportioned to us. So, I would recommend that you approve the resolution of intent.
I so move.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I got a question. You're just saying we're letting you know that in the future, this could happen. That's all we're doing, right?
That's it. Correct.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Okay. Next item, Harrison Boys Basketball Co-op Notice of Intent, which is for review only.
Do we have a representative from Harrison here? I believe, I believe we do and I'll let her speak to it. I, or I can read your letter. Okay. Whatever you would prefer, because I, I'm certainly amenable to giving you the floor since you're here.
So, I'm Steph Stevens, new principal over at Harrison. All right. So, I'm Steph Stevens. I'm the new principal over at Harrison School. And we really want to just thank you guys for providing our kids the opportunity with the co-op to, to learn and grow with sports. This year, getting feedback from our community and our, our school, we didn't have any kids, boys specifically, come over for boys' basketball. But in the future, it looks like we're going to have enough boys to host our own team. And so, what we're asking is that we can dissolve that co-op just for boys' basketball. We're more than, I mean, we still, like I said, we appreciate our kids having the opportunity for football and golf and girls' volleyball and girls' basketball, right? We come over for all of them. But just to kind of build our community back and build our school back and, and bring that sense of, of community back into our school. If we, if you guys would be willing to dissolve that, we would really, really appreciate it.
And, and just as a point of clarity, MHSE has changed their rules. So, at this point, all you have to do is notice us that you're dissolving it. It does not require our consent. So, we do not have this as an action item for that reason. We appreciate you noticing us that that's what's going to happen. At this time, board members can make comments if you wish or, or, you know, anything, but we don't, there's no action for us to take. Yeah.
So, I mean, basically, I feel, I like to be a transparent person, right? And, and so, I would rather come to you guys and have a conversation about it and just let you know that that's why and that's what we're looking at. And so, but, I mean, like I said, we so appreciate everything and all the opportunities that you continue to provide for our students.
Thank you. Thank you for making the trip over.
Is there any discussion on that? Any questions? Okay. The literacy grant application is also for review only.
Right. So, board members have already had an opportunity to review the literacy grant. It's in the documents that you've been emailed. It's in your, your meetings tonight. And you have already signed the assurances page allowing us to apply for the literacy grant, which we have discussed previously in the board meeting. This is the completed document. If anyone wants to take a look at it, it is here. Were there any questions for board members after, I'm sure you read it line by line? Were there any questions from you after you, after you read it? It is, it is very lengthy. It is, you know. How many?
Sixty-eight pages.
Sixty-eight pages.
So, Curtis has read line by line.
I actually have read it.
Yes. As have I. But we want to know what we're applying for and what we, what we wrote. But anyhow, are there any questions about the literacy grant application? Again, this is not an approval thing. The application had to be submitted previously in the month, so it has been submitted. But are there any questions from the board about?
Were there any strings attached to the grant?
No. So, by string, well, I, I should qualify that.
Like I'm just saying, were they requiring certain things of the school in order to do that or?
No. So, the only requirements are regarding funding. So, we have to spend a certain portion of the funds. So, we have to spend fifteen percent of the funds on our pre-K kids. So, these are our early lit classrooms, okay? We have to spend forty percent of the funds for the elementary, forty percent for the secondary, and five percent is kind of like the wiggle room where we can apportion it to anything. And by elementary, we mean K8, okay? So, as far as what we specifically do with the money beyond that, we have a yearly process that Alyssa and I have to do in a program called E-Grants, where we then actually tell the state, this is the very specific things that we want to do within those parameters. That is in keeping with our local literacy plan, which is one of the things we mentioned in the document. And then the state approves it year to year, what we actually spend the money on. So, it has to be tied to the goals and the objectives that are in this grant application. We, and since it is literacy-focused, we couldn't, for example, spend it on PE equipment or sports or anything that we can't show helps us with reaching our literacy goals. So, there are parameters that it has to apply to the literacy specifically and in those breakdowns. But as far as like what curriculum we have to use specifically or what intervention, that is the decision that our team, our local literacy team makes. And then you approve by approving our expenses each month. Yeah. I should mention too, this is our second round of the grant. Aaron, you weren't on the board when we did that first round, but that we had, we received this grant in 2019. And so, this is like basically a reapplication for a similar amount of money. Yeah.
Five years, Hannah?
This, yes. And this is, it is a five-year grant, but you have to remember too, that this is federal money and this is one of the things that I'm concerned about getting cut. Because this is a discretionary grant, this is not a formulaic grant. So, formulaic grants are per student or for students that are of a certain socioeconomic status. This is basically a grant that the Department of Ed developed and awarded to, I think it was ten states, Montana being one of them. And then the states issue sub-grants to LEAs, which are local education agencies of which we are one. I think any federal funding that is discretionary and tied to the Department of Ed is in question at this point. That is a fact. We don't know what is happening to the Department of Ed and we don't know what is happening to all of the grants that are administered by the Department of Ed. Given that we don't know that, it is very possible that this grant could be eliminated before it even gets off the ground or we could be midstream and it gets cut also. So, at this point, the application is open. Montana is inviting local districts to apply, is indicating that they believe the funding will be there. So, we have applied because it's in the best interest of the district. The outcome is yet to remain seen, whether we get the grant first and if we do get the grant, whether the money actually follows.
What did the school use the money on in 2019 through the five years?
Yes. So, in 2019, one of the primary uses of the money was to start our early literacy classroom. The classroom that Liberty Caldwell now teaches in, which is our four-year-old classroom, never existed prior to the grant. So, we started that classroom. We purchased the creative curriculum for that classroom, which is the curriculum that we use now. We also purchased it for our local Head Start, which we do not oversee. And we purchased it for Christie's Kitty Corner, which is our partner in the daycare that is on our property. The reason that we purchased curriculum for those outside agencies is because we wanted students in Whitehall to receive the same opportunities, no matter where they were having their formative years of early childhood education. In addition to that, Stephanie Lester was hired as our outside literacy coach. And she came into the school district and provided feedback to principals and teachers on improving, improving their practices to increase our literacy skills among our students and our performance and achievement. She also went to Christie's Kitty Corner and to Head Start and provided professional development for them as well. So, that was like a push-in thing to kind of wrap around in our community what was happening. The funding purchased our English curriculum for the six twelve, more than once actually, in that grant cycle because we updated it. And the funding purchased the curriculum that we use in the elementary. In addition to that, it also purchased all of the intervention programs that we do. And in the elementary, that is overseen by Brita Albersen with our para team in large part and then also by the classroom teachers. But all of the curriculum that they use, and same in the high school, there was intervention programs that were purchased for them also. So, really, the only position that it funded as far as people were, were our, was our early literacy teacher. Since the grant has ended, we have then paid for that position out of our general fund to continue the program.
Is there any sort of timeline to when you will hear back after the application? Have they given any indication?
It says May, but no date in May. So, we're hoping, the earlier in May would be the better because that would get us, give us a lot of breathing room as far as knowing that maybe we would have some additional funding next year. But no answers on that specifically. I'll let you know when I find out.
Any other questions? Okay. We need to approve the claims and accounts. We will start with the elementary. Need a motion.
I so move.
Any second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Need a motion to approve the claims and accounts for the high school.
I move to approve the claims and accounts for the high school.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We need a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.